Good evening. Welcome to the August 19th, 2021, meeting of Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Nancy Cordell and I call this meeting to order at 6:32. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and please be aware that anything you broadcast may be captured by this recording. My goodness, we're so happy to see so many engaged community members on Zoom this evening. To make the community comments portion of this meeting the most successful and the most productive, we have a few ground rules to abide by. Community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you make your comments brief, no more than three minutes. And looking at the amount of people on this Zoom, and I believe there are a lot of you that, I believe that you, a lot of you will want to be heard. So, so we may give as many people as a chance to speak. I'm going to keep comments strictly to three minutes. I've asked my colleague Sarah on the Dover School Committee to let you know when you have 30 seconds left, so you may wrap up and give a fellow community member the floor. Also, if someone already made the point you want to make, you do not need to repeat the same point. And if and when you'd like to make a comment, please virtually raise your hand and wait to be called on. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and where you live. Community comments are an opportunity for the school committee to listen to members of the community. Community comments are not a form for answering questions or engaging in debate. Once the public comment section of this meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is a standard operating procedure in school commitings across all three of our districts, and it is a best practice across school committees across Massachusetts. Tonight, in order to allow time for the school committee to conduct our business in utter respect for our invited guests, community comments will be heard for a maximum of 30 minutes. Thank you. I've asked Maggie and anyone else that could help identify people that would raise their hand, so Maggie is going to call on you and we'll begin this evening with community comments.
Rochelle Nisarala.
Hi. I am just going to jump in. I wanted to make a comment in favor of vaccine mandates. It's in the news today that the governor has ordered vaccines for all state employees, the president has ordered them for all federal employees, many companies are ordering for their employees. I happen to work at a university, been mandated that all students and all staff be vaccinated, also be masked indoors, also be subject to testing once a week. I also note that, I think yesterday, the president of the Mask Teachers Association Union came out in favor of vaccine mandates. I understand there was a Board of Health, Joint Boards of Health discussion on this about a month ago. I am sorry, I didn't know that it was happening and I did not attend, and I, I understand they did not recommend or require, and I, but I don't know their reasoning. And nevertheless, I still want to make this suggestion and for the school committees to consider for staff, especially for the elementary schools where none of the population, the student population will be vaccinated. I think we all know that vaccines are the best first line defense against the virus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nisarala. Are there any other comments? If you could use the raise your hand feature, please. Bethany Burke? Yes, Bethany.
Hi, hi, sorry, can you hear me? Hello?
Yep, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
First, a correction needs to be made from a statement that was made last night. It was said that COVID has a 2% mortality rate. I'm not sure where that number comes from, but it was misleading. The American Academy of Pediatrics reported that mortality rates among 43 states reporting children were 0.00% to 0.25% of all COVID deaths, and seven states reported zero child deaths, and states reporting 0.9% to 0.03% of all child COVID cases resulted in deaths. So I just want to make clear that masks are a medical device. They should be optional. Parents' rights of the children regarding their medical health and well-being is not at the discretion of any Board of Health, town or school committee, or the government. We choose not to wear masks. If any other parent wishes to mask their child, that is their choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. We have Wendy Murphy and then Jen, and just is, when you start your comment, if you could just say your, I know I said your name, but if you could say your name and then where you live, that would be great for the record. Thank you. Wendy Murphy?
Wendy. I'm so sorry. Thank you, Maggie. I'm Dr. Wendy Murphy. I live at One Donnelly Drive, a PhD, not an MD. I think it's every one of our responsibilities to truly understand the risk reward calculation for mask mandates and for vaccine mandates, given the population that we're dealing here with, which is children. We are so lucky that we have such a welcoming school system and we did such a great job last year, but we're in a different place now. We have a lot more data. As Bethany stated, the risks for children are very, very low, but the risks for COVID, the risks for their mental health is very high. Depression rates are up 25%, anxiety rates are up 20%. If you try to find a therapist right now, you cannot. Good luck out there. We have several children in the middle school, and actually, as middle schoolers, they actually want to wear masks to hide their faces. This is not healthy social behavior and not something we should be encouraging. In addition, we have children trying to learn languages and foreign languages, and their educational environment informs strong bonds with other children, friendships. These are all socio-emotional health issues that we want to encourage, and masks prevent a lot of that interaction. There are study after study out there that shows that seeing faces is essential to socio-emotional growth and health. So I just want to reiterate that parent choice is essential here. The school committee, their charter per Massachusetts state law gives you, gives them no purview over mandating a medical device. So we really appreciate the school committee thinking through this decision and looking at the legal ramifications. Kingston Board of Health tried to mandate masks last week, and they found out from the school committee that they could not, they had no purview over the school systems, only the Department of Education has purview over the school systems, and they cannot mandate medical devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Jen?
Hi, my name is Jen Limios, and I live here in Sherburne. I have two children, one in Pine Hill, who's eight, and the other in the middle school, who is 13. So I just wanted to kind of say first that one of the things I really appreciate about Dover Sherburne is that we all have a shared goal of keeping our kids safe and doing the right thing, and that does involve looking holistically, not just at one factor, but at many factors. I also wanted to say that I think unfortunately, what's difficult about the situation we find ourselves in is that COVID has changed. The virus we are dealing now, dealing with now in terms of the Delta variant is not the same as the one we had last year. And so unfortunately, we just don't actually know how different this is going to be. But if you look at what's happening in places where schools are opening without mask mandates, it's very scary. There's many school closures which are not good for kids' mental health. There's also a lot of pediatric wards that are filling up, and unfortunately, we simply just don't understand the morbidity and the mortality, not just of COVID, but of long COVID. I also think that one of the things about Dover Sherburne that's great is our teamwork, and I think that this is a good opportunity for us to think about how we model for our kids, what you do in your community and what you do to keep each other safe. So I feel unfortunately, again, with that, whether you're vaccinated or not, with Delta, you may still be carrying the virus. You can spread it to people who are not vaccinated. Even though my eight-year-old is in school all day with masks, if his sister, who is vaccinated, goes to middle school and doesn't wear a mask and picks it up, she can bring it back home to him. I really feel like this is hard for people to understand. I think it's painful. None of us wanted to be here, but I think we have to do the right thing to keep our kids safe, to keep schools open, and to serve our community as we fight together against a common enemy, which is the virus. Thank you.
Kathy Hargendai?
Yes, hello. I want to agree with Wendy Murphy and Bethany Burke with all of the things that they cited. I think that parental choice is extremely important, and I think that every parent should have the choice to let their child wear a mask or not wear a mask. I do not think the school committee has the legal right to mandate this. I will say that my daughter has an exemption. She has never worn a mask. She has never gotten COVID. She has never spread COVID. She has never been sick with COVID. So if, you know, if not wearing a mask was going to kill her, then she would have already died last year at Pine Hill School. So I have sent in a lot of information to the school committee, and I want you all to read that information, and if there's anyone on this call that would like to get a lot of the research that I have compiled with other people, doctors, nurses, clinicians from Sherburne and Dover and around the world, you can email me at kathyhorigan@icloud.com. I would be very happy to send it to you, and I implore the school committee to read that information and understand that they can be harming children if they mask those children, especially if they legally cannot do so. The Sherburne Board of Health last night gave guidelines. They did not make a mandate, and I believe that's because the governor has not created a mandate, DESI has not created a mandate, DPH has not created a mandate. There is no mandate right now for masking. It is all guidelines. It's CDC guidelines, it's DESI guidelines, and it's Board of Health guidelines. So use the guidelines, but again, parental choice should be the most important rule to go by. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dai. Do I have any other comments? I'm watching for the hand raised. Let's see, anyone? Oh. All right, we have Tara's iPad, and then it will be followed by Luca Mariana. And if you could just identify your name, where you live, et cetera. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, this is Tara Levine. I live on 32 Draper Road in Dover, and I appreciate all of the perspectives that have been shared, and certainly appreciate the point of view that parents ultimately have choices when it comes to their own children. My only point, and I'll make this quickly, is that when your choice affects the life and the health of other children, I think it becomes a different question. And so I strongly support the original points about requiring masks. I think that's important, as it's been noted earlier. Other schools across the country where we have not seen masks have seen significant spikes in cases, and I think we need to take that seriously and reflect the community, and as was said earlier, the interrelatedness of all of us within this community as we make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levine. Luca Mariana? I don't know if you know, but we, you're muted. Okay. Nancy? I think that, I don't know if there are any other comments or if you want to.
Okay, sure. All right, well, this then concludes. I thank everyone for their perspectives and their comments. This concludes community comments, and I would like to.
I just want to check, I'm sorry, Michelle Wickman just put her hand up.
Okay, sure.
So, Michelle Wickman?
Hi, sorry, I'm, I'm not in a place where I can put my video on right now, but I just wanted to make a quick comment and in support of what the last person said and what, what the early people said. I am, like many others in the community, I'm a physician here in Dover, and I work at Children's Hospital. And I just want to make the point and support the point that, you know, it's not just a decision for your own child, it's a decision for the community in terms of working together and protecting each other, and that the American Academy of Pediatrics, which I think was already said, very strongly recommends masking for all children over the age of two, regardless of vaccination. And it's, I think, very hard as a community and as a population to go against with the American Academy of Pediatrics is strongly recommending. I also support that the, that I think Delta is a new, is something that all the previous data that we have, you know, may not be the same with Delta. And I think we really don't know what the effects are going to be, short and long term, in children, and I think we can learn a lot from what's happening in schools and other places, particularly in the South and in the West, in Arizona, Utah, Florida, and Texas, and Alabama, and Georgia. So I think those things should be taken into consideration. The other piece is that, you know, mask, universal masking, you can call it a mandate, you can call it universal masking, you can call it whatever seems to be appropriate, is that, you know, these decisions can be revisited. That was the beautiful thing about the community last year, when it became, you know, okay, they not have masks outside, the kids didn't have masks outside, and that's one of the beautiful things about the school committee is that decisions can continually be revisited as new and more data becomes available. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Nancy, I turn it over to you right now. There are no other hands.
Okay, great. So.
Sorry, I tried to speak earlier, but my volume wouldn't go on. It's Cheryl Mariano. Hi, everyone. I'll be quick. I, I strongly agree with Bethany, Wendy, and Kathy, and Tara, and Michelle, that this should be a parent choice, considering the higher statistics of social emotional issues, physical issues amongst children with the strep and things around their face. Also, the evidence that it's actually not helping the spread, it's actually making it worse. Children are getting sick with bacterial infections because they're wearing dirty masks all day. Unfortunately, teachers will use taking away mask breaks as punishment, and other things are happening with the masks that I find very stressful for the children, and I would love the opportunity to have that choice for my kids, especially that it actually is illegal to force this kind of mandate on children, considering they're not in a sterile environment, they're not being fitted for PPE, which all doctors are getting within the hospital, and they're actually getting physicals to be sure that they can wear them for long periods of time, like during surgeries. I don't think any of our kids are being checked for that, and the long-term use of them could be devastating. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the volume.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks, Cheryl. Okay, this concludes community comments, and I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent, Kathy Smith, for the 2121 school opening update.
Evening, everyone. I want to start by thanking everybody from the leadership team, my colleagues, so many stakeholders who contributed and provided insight, knowledge, and comments regarding keeping our students and school community safe during this very challenging time in education. Although we have listened to many points of view shared this evening, I truly know we are all here to do what is in the best interest of our students, staff, and families. I really look forward to working alongside our school committee, our local officials, parents, community teachers, staff, and especially meeting your 2,100 students in the Dover Sherburne School District in this coming year. I have to say, for, I'm kind of introducing myself to many of you, I, in the interim superintendent, started July 1st, have been in the district for about 50 days. And although, like all of you, I was very hopeful when the last school year ended, that we had seen the last of masks, and we're certainly on an upward trajectory to go back to pre-COVID conditions in our schools, allowing our children to be playing with friends, to be working together collaboratively in classrooms, and to be doing the many things that are so wonderful about what happens, especially in a district like Dover and Sherburne. So I would ask you to have patience this evening, to understand that what I talk about this evening and the recommendations that I'm going to make to the school committee are things that can be revisited as we go along. We are going to be coming off of in a very short, you know, two weeks, a summer break, where many people have traveled, have had wonderful opportunities, all with the hope that we were beyond where we were a year ago, and I believe we are. We have a lot more data, a lot more information. So tonight, I'm going to do a couple of things. I'm going to ask my team members to join me at different parts of this presentation. I'm going to ask, after I do the opening and make the recommendation, I'm going to ask Elizabeth Beth McCoy, our assistant superintendent, to talk about teaching and learning and what you can expect this school year. I'm going to ask our business and operations manager, Dawn Fattori, to talk about so many things about our facilities, about our before and after school, about what we continue to do in our schools. And I'm going to ask our nurse leader, Jill Fedor, to join us and again, talk about information that when I tell you it continues to change every single day. And I know you know that. When you look at, a week ago, they talked about a booster shot for Pfizer and Moderna, and that booster shot was going to be available for high-risk populations, and now all of a sudden, you know, a few days later, it's going to be available to everybody. So please understand that what I talk about this evening, we will continue to revisit, we will continue to make recommendations, we will continue to gather as many metrics as we can to make decisions in the best interest of your children. But understand that we are looking to make sure our children and all our children, our youngest children, right through our seniors, are able to remain in school for a traditional, you know, five-day-a-week, making sure that they are having these experiences that are so needed at this time. So Dawn, you're going to open up the PowerPoint for me, please. Okay, so again, this is our Fall 2022 and opening plans, and I want to share with those of you watching, and for many of you that can't, that this will be available, and we will put it up on our website, so you can refer to this information. So, so let me start with the next slide, Dawn, please. So COVID-19 and the Delta variant. So you've already addressed that, a lot of our medical professionals in our two communities. So all proposed recommendations have been carefully considered, and they must be interpreted and applied in the context of the emerging knowledge that we are getting about this Delta variant. And as was stated, we're watching what's happening in other school communities that have opened up as they traditionally do down south and other states that open up earlier than us, and we've seen what started to happen. Granted, we're a very different community, and I'm going to talk about, again, our rates in Dover and Sherburne, which are very high for vaccinations, which is a real plus for your communities. So the Delta variant, we know, is more contagious. It is highly contagious, more than two times as contagious as previous variants, and our unvaccinated people remain the greatest concern. And we have seen breakthrough infections. They're happening much less often than infections in unvaccinated people. Individuals infected with the Delta variant, including fully vaccinated people, with symptomatic breakthrough infections, can transmit this variant to others. Fully vaccinated people with Delta variant or breakthrough infections can spread the virus to others. However, vaccinated people appear to be infectious for a shorter period. Now, we do have many of our students, many of our staff vaccinated. What we do know is our little ones are not vaccinated at this time. Next slide, please. So here's an overview. And again, I want to call attention, and again, I am so proud to be part of your community. And when I look at 95%, and I look at a lot of these percentages around the state, you are truly one of the highest in the state. Those of you that are eligible to get the vaccine have done your part. You care about your community, you care about your children. I hear all over the state, they talk about vaccine clinics. I did this in a previous district I was in, to encourage people to get the vaccine. You've done an excellent job in your community, giving us that strategy that is going to allow us, as we go along, to make decisions for our community. So again, high vaccination rate. Again, our priority is to bring students back five days in-person learning, which is required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We want to make sure that we're able to remain in person. We are going to absolutely prioritize the health and safety of our students, staff, and all that enter our school buildings. We want to welcome back parents, volunteers, visitors, get back to some of the things that we expect. You'll hear me talk about open houses, possibility for assemblies, you know, your athletic events, your drama, your clubs. All of those things are things that we are looking to bring back this September to our districts. We're going to utilize layered mitigation measures to start the school year. As I talked about, large gatherings, we will determine that on an individual basis. For instance, in talking with your principals and your school leaders, when you look at something such as open houses, which every parent loves to attend, the kids love to show off their classrooms, their teachers, you know, a feeling of community coming into the schools, they're all spruced up, we all do this every year, it's a great kickoff. We are going to be able to do that, but you might see, and I'm going to use as an example, and I know at Pine Hills, in talking to Dr. Brown, one of the things that we talked about was maybe having for the younger grades, one night, K to 2, and maybe 3 to 5, another night. So that we can watch the density and the number of people that are in our, our schools. We are going to continue to work with and follow the guidance from the local Boards of Health, from our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Department of Public Health, the CDC, along with other medical professionals, the Academy of Pediatrics, it's the American Academy of Pediatrics. It was quoted from one of our speakers, just came out with very, very strong guidance. We are going to develop metrics. I do not have those metrics here this evening. We are continuously going to review data and revise our school operating protocols as warranted. So when you hear me speak tonight, I don't want you to think this is carved in stone for 180 school days. I want you to think of it as sandstone. So we are going to, and I commit, to working with the community, to be out there gathering data, sharing with you what the metrics are going to be, putting it up on our website, and making sure that we're taking all of this information in before we make decisions. Next slide, please. Under health and hygiene, so school protocols. Although not required, we strongly encourage all students, staff, and community members to receive the COVID-19 vaccine when eligible, and to not forget about the flu vaccine when it becomes available. All those are mitigating strategies that every one of us can do, and you heard me call out what an excellent job you're doing in our two communities. I am recommending that masks to start the school year, for some of the reasons that I just shared, are required for all students, all staff, and all visitors inside our buildings, regardless of vaccination status, to begin the school year. And that is based on a recommendation of the Dover and Sherburne Boards of Health, who held their meeting yesterday. Many members, and I'm going to ask them if they are in the audience this evening, if they would like to speak after we do our full presentation, to certainly add their wealth of knowledge. And many of you know, I have been in a lot of communities, and I have been in communities during the pandemic and during COVID, and have worked with Boards of Health. And I commend your Boards of Health for the information that they were able to share, the research, the collaboration, that they have been available if we have any questions as we try to understand some of the things happening with the Delta variant. So again, I thank them for their recommendation. So masks are not required when eating or outdoors. So we, again, have a district where we have space, where our middle and high school students go outside and have opportunities to lunch outside. Outdoor classrooms, you know, taking mask breaks, all of these things, recess, will be times when our children, just like we did last spring, have an opportunity to have a mask break, take their masks off, play with their friends, go outside and eat together. We will continue to optimize spacing, and again, I applaud you, and I look at your class sizes that you are vigilant about, making sure regardless of COVID, that you have appropriate teacher-staff ratios, so that when we talk about spacing, we are able to space in many of our classes. We are able to space in many of our classrooms and still bring back. You know, our uh, our traditional uh, tables, chairs, uh, ways for kids to collaborate. So caretakers are encouraged also to be vigilant in assessing COVID-19 symptoms prior to sending students to school. And some of that information has changed. And our nurse leader Jill Afeedor, I, I'm not sure if she'll address it tonight. But we are developing. What I'm calling frequently asked questions. Many of them are right here in the PowerPoint that we will put up this slide deck tomorrow. But we are going to be sharing all of this information for our parents who are truly the most important partners that we have. Next slide, please. At this point, I would like to invite Nurse Leader Jill Fedor. Are you on?
Yes, I am. I'm here.
Okay Jill, could you please, I'm going to, to mute and uh. I will let you take over and I'll jump back in.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Um, I am really excited for the beginning of this school year, and I'm looking forward to seeing. Um, at least all of the kids at Pine Hill, um, upon our return and as I. Get to make my way across the district, see um, our friends at Chickering and some of the older. Uh, graduates from Pine Hill who are now at the region. I'd like to talk tonight a little bit about close contacts because that. Has changed since, those protocols have changed since last year. And the number one change that we've had since last year is that vaccinated individuals. Uh, will be exempt from close contact protocols. As long as they continue to remain asymptomatic. So as long as um, a close contact is healthy and not demonstrating. Any symptoms of COVID and has been vaccinated, they will not have to follow um, close contact or contact tracing. Um, protocols for this school year. Unvaccinated individuals who are deemed to be a close contact will be required to follow a new testing protocol. Called the test and stay method, and I will um, talk about that a little bit more in um, the following slides. But participating in the test and stay program at school will allow close. Contacts to be able to remain in school. So um, that's an exciting program that we're looking forward to having this year. Of course, any um, unvaccinated individual who has been identified as a close contact. And chooses not to receiving, receive any type of COVID testing. Will need to quarantine for the full 10 days, just as um, they did need to do last year. So we'll talk a little bit more about testing, I think, on the next slide, Dawn. Okay, so this slide here just lists um, the different types of testing that we hope to offer this year throughout the district. The test and stay and the symptomatic testing will happen in all four buildings. Uh, routine COVID screenings, which is formerly known as pool testing. It's been renamed by D E S I this year. Uh, will hopefully take place at the elementary schools. I'm saying um, that we're, we're hopeful um, at the elementary schools because we really need a high participation rate. In order for that to um, to happen. Um, we're not launching uh, routine COVID screenings at the moment. Um, at the region because we know we have such a high. Population of vaccinated students and staff there. Okay. I just want to, I'm looking at my notes. I'm sorry. Um. Okay, so let's talk about the test and stay protocol. That is the new. Program that is being offered. It's going to be available throughout the district and all four buildings this year. So we will utilize this program when we have identified individuals who um, are considered close contacts. Those close contacts can take a rapid antigen test, the Abbott-Bionex Now test. For seven consecutive days at school. And remain in school as long as that test um, continues to be negative. Um, additional requirements would be that the, the individual remains asymptomatic, of course, and that they continue to conduct. Um, active monitoring of symptoms for the whole 14 days. But we're really excited about this program because it's really going to eliminate. Um, a lot of missed school. Um, when those students last year or staff needed to quarantine outside of school. Um, for, for being a close contact, we can now handle that in school as long as um, folks remain asymptomatic during that time period. So we are super excited about that. If, of course, at any time, if somebody uh, close contact does become symptomatic during those 14 days. We're going to recommend that the, the um, that person goes out for a PCR test. Um, but asymptomatic. Um, students and staff can have a test in the health office for seven consecutive days and remain in school. The diagnostic testing that um, is being offered this year through D E S I and D P H is for. Some, a student or staff member who starts to exhibit symptoms during the school day. Um, they can also receive a, an Abbott-Bionex Now. Rapid test. Those results will come back within 15 minutes and we will know the answer. Now. I have to say, I'm not as excited about this type of testing, to be honest with you, because. It really would have to be for mild symptoms if, if an individual is displaying. Um, some of the key bolded symptoms that you'll see in a future communication from me. Um, I don't have that slide here tonight. But um, the bolded symptoms of COVID, new loss of um, taste or smell. Fever, cough in conjunction with other symptoms. Uh, the, those individuals are going to go out and get a test regardless, but. If we have a student who appears with some mild symptoms and based on the nurse's judgment, we can do an um. The nurse's judgment and parent collaboration. Um, we do an Abbott-Bionex Now test in the health office, and then we can make a decision and a plan. From there, based on those test results. I want to really emphasize that the diagnostic testing is not a pathway to send six students um, to school. That should really only be used if a student develops symptoms during the school day. If your child wakes up not feeling well, or if a staff member wakes up not feeling well. Uh, we're going to ask for the same um, the same plan that we had last year. Please stay home. I cannot tell you how integral that um, that portion of safe schools was for us last year. We were um, amazed and excited and so grateful. How everybody really pulled together and did not send. Six students to school and did not show up at work sick. Um, I really in my heart believe that was. One of the bigger strategies that sometimes goes unnoticed. Um, and then the last. Set of testing is the uh, pool testing or the routine surveillance screening. And again, we're focusing this at the elementary schools because we know our students aren't vaccinated there. Um, we really need that program to be, have a high participation rate. We need 75 or 80%. For it to be an effective and an accurate program. Um, but if we do get that um. Consent in, then we will certainly run that program. And uh, that will be a weekly surveillance that we will do similar to what we did last year. Um, we have a new vendor this year. The state is only offering one choice um, in vendors for these tests. And um, there are some options for how we conduct the pool testing and the follow-up that's. Uh, part of that, if we did have a positive pool. So more to come on that after we. Um, secure our spot with our, our new vendor. Um. And I, I think that's all I have to say. At the end, obviously, um. Any, any testing that happens in the health office is going to need a um, parent or guardian consent. If they're under 18. So those consents will be coming shortly. Um, they will be coming from the district, but they are written by um, our, our new vendor, which is C I C. And those should be out next week.
Thank you, Jill. Uh, I also want to add to that. Uh, I want to thank Kate McCarthy, our student support administrator uh, for putting together by tomorrow, we had to, in order to. Have a priority spot um, with getting the uh, testing supplies, et cetera. I want them to know that robust testing in schools. Are at no cost to the district this year, and this is coming from the Executive Office of Health and Human Services. To cover that cost. So we made sure we started out by putting in for every single test. And when we talk about the group pool testing, I'm told last year, again, towards the end of the year, I believe when it was implemented. The numbers were not high. We're going to make sure that we reach out to parents uh, at our elementary schools. We're going to show them videos that they can see that. We'll put it up on the website. With this company, uh, C I C, but we are looking for a high percentage rate of participation. Of 75 to 80% so that we can use this as another mitigation strategy. So. Uh, again, more to come as uh, Jill said uh, with our families. So next, I'm going to hand it over uh, to Dawn Fatori to talk about our facility updates.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, I think we've uh, made a lot of progress in the last year. I was thinking back to about this time last year. And at that point, we didn't really fully understand how COVID was being spread. So we're. Ultra conservative in our school with both um, ventilation, our cleaning protocols, constantly the kids were putting. Hand sanitizing and washing their hands, but I think we've, we've learned a lot and um, this is where we will open up the school this year. So. All of our um, HVAC protocols, so that's our air ventilation from last year will continue. Uh, we talked a lot about, you know, the importance of the thicker filters. So we are using the Murph 13 filters. We've continued that switch out in our schools where applicable. We're continuing to purge um, all of our buildings, both two hours after and prior to the school day. Uh, that just allows for the whole building to have fresh air brought in and anything in there um, uh, taken out. Uh, we're going to continue to recommend that the windows in um, classrooms where they are slightly opened. Um, we learned that even just the slightest little crack actually um, pro- uh, provides for uh, increase in the uh, um, air circulation. So that it will be something that we will continue to um, uh, you know, recommend. Uh, we did have some issues last year. And some of the schools with humidity levels and obviously if there were wild storms. Uh, but we will definitely continue that protocol. And in those designated areas that um. Uh, need be where we need to enhance the air circulation and ventilation, the uh, HEPA air purifiers that we purchased last year. Are still in place and will be utilized. I think one of the greatest changes, uh, or the biggest changes is in our clo- our cleaning protocols. Um, we were constantly cleaning surfaces last year, but that's really no longer required. So we will go back to our regular cleaning protocols, which was includes nightly disinfecting of all areas. Um, versus uh, you know, every hour that we were doing um, last year. Hand sanitize, hand sanitizing options because hand hygiene is still something they're recommending we be diligent about. Will be available throughout the buildings. Um, in the elementary schools, almost all the classrooms have sinks. Uh, there are sinks in the restrooms. We purchased uh, freestanding and. Additional wall mounted hand sanitizing dispensers last year, which are all still in place. And will encourage the students to use um, those uh, access to those before and after eating, after outside play. And other activities as needed.
Dawn, you're going to continue with transportation?
Continue with transportation and uh, uh, this was a, a, a huge task for us last year mainly because of the. Reduced occupancy, the need to do seat assignments. So we're pleased um, to say tonight that um. A lot of those restrictions have been lifted. So all students and drive, driver and additional staff. Sometimes we do have additional staff in our buses will be required to wear a mask, and that's by the federal public health order. Um, so while they're on a school related bus trip, so that's to and from school, our athletics. Uh, we are running the middle school, high school late bus if there's any field trips. So anytime a student is on our school bus. They, at this point in time, they should be wearing a mask. Um, there's no restrictions on ba- bus capacity. And all students will be assigned to a bus route. Um, the routes will be posted on our website the week of August 23rd, so everyone can take a look and see. Uh, where, what buses they're on and the um, proposed route. Um, just like we did last year, we will be telling our bus drivers that the window should still be slightly open to allow for air circulation. And as I said, um, it has been, it's been uh, decided that assigned seats are not necessary because travel on the buses will not. Constitute um, any contact tracing.
Thank you, Dawn. Uh, Assistant Superintendent McCoy, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, so selfishly, I think I got the best news to share this evening, and perhaps I'm biased about teaching and learning. Um, but I've spent the last two days with our um, K through 12 leaders and principals, and today I got to spend the day with our K through 12 teacher leaders. And when you ask them what they're looking uh, forward to most about returning to school this fall, it's certainly the fact that our teaching and learning practices. Um, can resort back to those that we um, utilized pre-COVID. Uh, that being said, you know, there are many things that we missed in the last year, you know, rug time, hands-on learning. Opportunities for students to collaborate. So we'll certainly be bringing all of those practices back. In addition to all the silver linings that we, we learned in the last year around um, new apps and programs to engage students. Um, using different authentic assessment methods. Um, using the outdoors and having kids learning outside. So I think that the learning we're about to see in the next year is going to be the best of both worlds, both pre-COVID and COVID. Um, so all of that said, uh, the expectation is that all students return to school in person five days a week. Aside from students who are approved to um, engage in a homeschool schooling program. Or those who apply for a D E S I approved virtual program, all students are expected to be in school. Uh, Commissioner O'Reilly will no longer accept. Uh, remote teaching and learning provided by a public school district to count towards. A child's instructional hours. So everybody will be back in school. Uh, just like last year, we're going to prioritize safety, which is what you've heard at the beginning of this presentation around all mitigation factors. And protocols that will be following. Secondly, um. We will be focusing on student social emotional wellness. Um, we'll be focusing on relationship building between educators and students. We'll continue to utilize programs. Like responsive classroom. At the middle and high school level, we'll have our advisories and our flex blocks in place. Um, and in addition to just the everyday interaction between adults and students within the building. We have surveys um, and screeners in place so that we can continue to monitor students' uh, social emotional wellness and their needs. Um, and anyone who is identified as needing additional support, uh, thanks to the support. Of our community and the school committees, we have more um, counselors and adjustment counselors on staff than ever. Uh, and we will continue to utilize those. Professionals and our programs to make sure that students get what they need so that they can learn. Um, and of course, in addition to safety.
Okay, um, I will.
Sorry. Um, in terms of academics, um, it's expected that teachers will teach at the next grade level. So instead. So third grade teachers will be teaching third grade material. Uh, and if it is found that a child needs additional support, perhaps um, revisiting. Uh, and a topic that they learned in second grade and need additional interventions, we will certainly. Provide those um, with our teachers and our educational assistants. Uh, and again, going back to the practices that we know work well for kids, such as small groups. Uh, using manipulatives, we can share materials. Our classrooms will return to. Um, configurations, whether it's flexible seating or using kidney tables. Will make good use of the outdoors. Um. One of the practices that we've learned from the pandemic is the use of weekly learning plans to outline grade six through 12. Uh, kind of the overview of academics for the week, which we have found to be a very good organizational tool. Not only for kids. Um, but for the adults and the special educators and the counselors that help students. So those weekly learning plans will continue. Um, all information will continually, continue to be. Uh, provided on CSO. Our online learning program for students in K through two and Google Classroom for students in three through 12. So that not only when students are in school, can they access the materials and the assignments. Uh, and the collaboration tools, they need to do the work. If a child needs to stay home because they're sick. For whatever reason, they will still have access to the curriculum. Um, so I believe that covers teaching and learning, and I'm happy to address questions afterwards.
Thank you, Beth, and I'm going to go back to Dawn for the next slide on our after-school activities.
So we are definitely excited to extend our after-school activities to share. We um, at the elementary schools, we did run both our D E T A and C E T A programs. Uh, last year, which I will say, we were one of the few community, communities who did. So I applaud the staff who um. Who worked in those programs. We'll continue with the two pickup times. So there'll be a 5:15 pickup and a 6 o'clock pickup. We'll also continue our brand new program we introduced last year, the After the Bell Club called the ABC Program. And that will run based on uh, participation Monday through Friday, and that allows parents of. And that will run based on participation Monday through Friday, and that allows parents a three thirty pickup. At the middle and high school, after-school help will be available as scheduled by the educators. The middle school activities, which happened virtually last year, will be in person and those will run Monday through Thursday and that brochure will come out once you get back to school. All high school extracurricular activities will be offered to students at this time. We did a great job of doing this last year, but a lot of our clubs were virtual. So it'll be great to have them back in person this year. And as we had talked a lot about last year, the athletics and drama programs will begin their sessions at three forty-five to allow students to still have access to after-school help or to participate in clubs as they, as they would desire. So that's all great news. The, the late bus, we'll, we're going to start with a four o'clock departure from here in the region. So we'll play around with that to see how that works, but that's what we're anticipating. And just so to remind you, since we didn't do late buses last year, we have two condensed routes that go to Dover and two condensed routes that go through Sherburne. And like I said, those will potentially depart here on campus around four o'clock.
Thank you. And to finish up with next steps, I'm really pleased that we're going to be holding actually three forums next week. We'll start on Tuesday with an elementary parent forum. It will be via Zoom. The link will be up on our website and embedded in a letter going home to all parents, hopefully before the end of the day tomorrow. Again, that's the twenty-fourth at six thirty PM. We have a staff forum on Wednesday, August twenty-fifth at nine AM before the staff actually comes back, which I believe is on the thirtieth. That also will be via Zoom with a letter going out to staff members. And our secondary parent forum will be on Wednesday, August twenty-fifth at six thirty PM via Zoom. We will start to gather a lot of your questions if we haven't already answered them. In this particular slide deck, we will continue to gather and update that information on our website. So in a timely manner, you're able to, to see any of the questions other people had or you may have with answers. First day of school for our grades one through twelve is on Wednesday, September first. We're really excited about welcoming, as we are every year, all our students back. Pre-K to K will have a meet and greet on Wednesday, September first at both of our elementary schools. And the first day of school for pre-K and K will be Thursday, September second. And the next joint meeting of the school committees will be on Tuesday, October nineteenth at six thirty PM or earlier as needed. And the reason I call that out is because we will continue to look at information, to develop the metrics and to continue to communicate with both communities and our region about really what next steps are as we continue to support our students with in-person learning. So that is the end of our presentation. And as I said, I would like to ask if there is anyone from the Dover and Sherburne Boards of Health who met last evening, made a recommendation to us. And I don't know if they want to make comments at this time or can explain again, some of the avenues we're taking.
Sure. This is Matt Vitale on the Sherburne Board of Health. Is it okay for me to go?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Vitale.
Sure. So just in terms of background, I am a DS parent of two Pine Hill students. I work clinically as a physician at Brigham Women's Hospital where the team I am the director for was one of our primary inpatient services for COVID patients. We continue to be the service line that takes care of the COVID patients that are coming back into the hospital now. I'm a member of the Sherburne Board of Health. I'll be working hard to relay the discussion that we had, as well as the general context that informed that. But sort of speaking as a subject matter expert, as opposed to as vessel of the board of health itself, since we don't, we're not here tonight. I think that all the points that were raised in the district's presentation sound right. I think there are a couple of pieces that are really important to communicate and to connect. I think the first is that I would not disagree with any of the assertions. I think Bethany cited the AAP data about pediatric morbidity and mortality. And again, would say I have no disagreement that for most children, COVID is a mild self-limited infection. The rate of hospitalization, depending on the state and the context ranges from one to fifty to one in five hundred. Again, as a parent of a child who's been hospitalized, that would give me pause to say that still felt like a big deal to us, even though it wouldn't hit a mortality statistic. I think the more important part is how much disruption do we see in school if we have in-school transmission? And I think that there's really a common goal to say, having kids safely in school, sustainably in school, having a structure that's successful out of the gate felt really important. And if we think about Delta and what we know about it so far, recognizing that we'll continue to learn new things and experience new variants, Delta is about two to three times as transmissible as the prior variants, which is about three times as transmissible as, as seasonal flu. The case fatality rate for COVID is about three times flu, but that can be skewed by under-identification of cases, which is likely ongoing as there are likely many cases in the community that never get positive testing results. I think that the thing that really stands out in my mind as a Pine Hill parent is how disruptive it will be if we have classes within school transmission that then need to pivot to remote, particularly for our kids who are not used to doing that. And really thinking about, we collectively have a certain amount of risk we can take on as we navigate Delta. My advice to the school committee would be to spend that risk on normal classroom structures, extracurriculars and those other pieces. But I don't think it's realistic to say this is gone and we can just go back to the way we did it before, particularly when we have large segments of our student body who don't have access. In terms of the data we run and trend, we look at that every week and then get ongoing data working with our local public health nurse, which is a third-party contract with whom we collaborate, as well as working with the district. Looking at our data that was updated today by this date, we have had a tenfold increase in the case rate in our combined communities over the last five weeks. So I think we're still in a safe place to have school, have in-person school. But I think it really highlights the importance of continued prudence and recognizing we're in a really different place at the beginning of August than we were at the beginning of July. I do think that we can have strategies that make everything that was described in the presentation safe and manageable. But I think we should proceed with caution because if we push this too far, if we don't have masking, if we don't have some mitigation strategy in place, I worry that we will see in-school transmission for the kids who have worries about that, I think that will be a pretty traumatic experience. And I think collectively as parents, what we heard so much last year was the need to get the kids back in school and that that was the most important thing for us. If that's really the most important thing for us, this is probably one of the trade-offs we need to make right now, at least coming out of the gate. I think it's hard to have a really specific to say, is it two weeks? Is it four weeks? Is it six weeks? Is it eight weeks? I think that anything less than at least a couple of weeks is too soon. They expect that we'll continue to learn from the experience of other districts that take a different approach. I think we'll also understand Massachusetts macro pattern of how much are we coming out of a Fourth of July trend versus seeing larger patterns of disease. I think that the last piece I would say is there are some specifics related to the DUCY protocols and the DPH protocols related to masking that also give us a lot more flexibility for close contacts if both parties are masked. I think that one of the important things that I think about when the question of parent choice comes up is that when we look at the expected benefit of masking, and this is one of the limitations in much the data that was circulated, is we do know that the benefit to the individual of a non-fitted mask in protecting them from COVID is limited. It appears that there's some benefit, but that the bulk of the benefit we're seeing is in source control from a presymptomatic or asymptomatic person, which is demonstrably more common in children. And so I think that what the mask is doing is making sure that we are reducing to the degree we're able to the likelihood of having a presymptomatic or asymptomatic kiddo in a classroom who's then spreading it to their peer group while we're embracing a lot of our curriculum strategies and then spreading it either within the larger community, within the household or just disrupting that classroom. And so I think that really the masking is primarily a source control issue with an important, meaningful secondary benefit of depending individual infection. But this really isn't about the experience of the masked individual alone. It really is that community issue that others have raised. So with that, I'm going to go back on you, which is what my wife generally recommends. And I'll let Kate take over.
Thanks. I agree wholeheartedly with what you've said, Matt. I'm Kate Peterson. I'm a retired primary care physician. I'm a member of the Dover Board of Health. I, I, I think I have little to add. I thought you said it very well, Matt. But I, I do want to emphasize the pooled testing option in the elementary schools and how important I think that will be to providing information to us, data to us on a weekly basis about, about the incidence of COVID in our elementary students. I think it will help us understand what's happening in our community and will also help us to identify asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic infection as quickly as we can as a way of trying to prevent spread in the school. And again, helping to keep the school open, to keep every, every student in class as much as possible. So I, I would urge you all to participate in that and to spread the word about and encourage others to participate because it is important to have, to reach that, what I think Jill said, is an eighty percent threshold for, for having the program available. I, I think that's, that's my only addition to Matt's comments.
Thank you very much. And that is our presentation on the opening.
All right. Great. Thank you so much. Thanks, Kathy, Beth, Jill, Don, all the school leaders, the Board of Health for, you know, putting the guidance and recommendation for the way we should open school in 2021. I know a lot of work and time has been put into it and we thank you in advance. We thank you right now. Okay, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the face covering policy revision.
Do you want to do it by each district?
I just need a second motion so we can begin discussion.
Second.
Okay. And now I'd like to open up to the floor for discussion. The, the school committees.
Nancy, I'm happy to watch for hands raised.
Thanks. Thanks, Maggie.
I'm sorry, David, I haven't realized. I, how do you say your last name?
It's David Casas.
David Casas from the Sherburne School Committee.
Yep. Thank you. So this is my first school committee, so it's an honor to be here. And, you know, I've carefully listened to, you know, parents' comments as well as the subject matter experts, and I hear your concerns. And, you know, I understand the importance of parental choice, but given the following factors for me, it's the ongoing spread of the Delta variant, given that, you know, a lot of our children have not been vaccinated, given the, the different age groups, you know, families are coming back from summer vacation travel, not just from the US, but in other parts of the world. You know, community impact and the, the risk of disruption to our schools of COVID were to spread in our classrooms. I strongly believe that children should be wearing masks in congregant settings. My son wore a mask all of last year, but that would, he may have contracted COVID. He, you know, I know, you know, from talking to him, even though he's a toddler, you know, he enjoyed his school year. You know, he, you know, kids wear masks, you know, in different ways. They have, you know, caricatures on them. And I understand that it can have like, you know, some, you know, there are some consequences, you know, wearing masks. But, you know, I can't foresee him being in a classroom where it would be safe for him to continue to grow and learn without it. You know, I believe that masks are not the panacea to ending COVID. But in my opinion, a mitigation tool to slow the spread until we get out of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Amanda Brown.
Hello. I just want to thank everybody. The guidance that the school leaders have put together is remarkably thorough and I feel like you've thought of every detail and used what we learned last year. And I'm just so impressed and so happy to see all of your faces. It's making me excited for the school year. I just had a question about masks specific to Sherburne. Last year, we did have the issue where there were days that it was very, very, very warm. And I'm just wondering what the plan is for potential early dismissals or no school days, given heat situations with masking.
I guess, Amanda, I need to take that to start. I, I didn't realize, although I have to say I did hear something about it. At this time here, our goal was obviously to keep kids in school. I would work with Principal Dr. Brown and our leadership team to be able to share with you whatever that plan would be. And obviously, we're in hot days right now. The kids will be back here on September first and we all know what can happen in the month of September. So if you'll allow me an opportunity to get back to you on that unless one of my team members, my leadership team members wants to jump in. So I am aware of it. I just, I don't have the answer for that right now.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any other school committee members? Oh, Mark.
Thank you. I know that a lot of thought and effort has gone into this plan. And I think one thing that really reminds me of the importance of this structure that's set up is that we will be basing this based on information that unfolds in the first few weeks and months of school. I wonder if you can share a bit about how frequently decisions would be made in light of data? Or like, would it be roughly a monthly, monthly, month-by-month analysis? Or do we know yet?
Mark, to answer that question, I actually think, you know, it certainly would be week to week. We're not looking month to month. Well, hopefully we're going to learn lessons right away, you know, get our kids back, get them into their routines and be able to report to you. We're going to work with our Health and Hygiene Task Force, which was part of your Return to School Subcommittee last year. They did an excellent job. Metrics are very different that they looked at this year than we might look at now. We might start to look at as we gather information and get back, even at your middle and high school level. You know, how many staff members do we have vaccinated? How many of our students in each of the different grades get to a certain percentage where we start to, to make decisions? Although a parent did bring up a good point about if we were to unmask some of our older students and they have younger siblings at home, you know, there could be some transmission shared that way. So all of this will be really on a week-to-week basis. We hope to have a data dashboard on our website with the new metrics and we will share that widely with our community. So I, I'm not going to say because of convenience, a month to month. We will share metrics when we have agreed on what those are, working with our health professionals, working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and our partners, and then decide when we're able to make decisions. And our goal is, you know, if we're starting with a universal mask mandate, you know, our goal is to start to roll back some of those restrictions, the more confidence we have in our school settings.
Thank you.
Maggie, have your hand raised?
I, I, thanks. I, I just wanted to take the moment to say thank you. Thank you to Superintendent Smith, who mentioned that she's been at work for just fifty days. But based on the frequency of emails and so forth, I, I feel like she probably worked seven days a week since she started on January, July first. And also to our Board of Health members. I recognize that this decision is, you know, it's, it's not something where no matter what we decide, everybody's going to be cheering for, for us or for them. And I very much appreciate the folks who do that work and the degree to which they've spent time. And particularly for those who are working in clinical settings where they're facing the challenges of COVID, revisiting them again, it's, it's a lot. And I really appreciate it because, you know, as we all know, these are volunteer jobs in our community. And so I just want to say thank you on behalf of our community committee and, and our families. And, and, you know, I, I mean, I support the recommendations of the Boards of Health. I'm hopeful that this is some kind of blip and that we can move away and have, you know, a, you know, back to normal world. But, but what's most important to me right now as a school community member is to do everything that we can do to make sure that kids are at our schools, that they're learning in active ways, that they're able to work in table groups and touch each other's crayons. And I, I just, if, if, you know, I watched what's happening in Georgia where they have to shut down an entire classroom and. And as an educator, I've had that happen to our schools and it's really a lot and it's not good for families. And when we think about social emotional learning, I just think that we, I support what you guys are asking us to do. Thank you.
So Maggie, I have to say for full disclosure, although I, I feel like I've been working hard, as any of you can imagine coming into a district, but really the seven day a week people have been my leadership team. So when you have a new superintendent that comes on board, a lot more falls on your plate. So we've had a leadership retreat, Assistant Superintendent McCoy, you know, I, I know the hours that they're spending. Dawn, Kate, they, that is my top leadership team, including all our principals. So you're right, people have been working really hard and I'm so excited to be part of your district.
Thank you. And thank you Cheryl. Cheryl too. Thank you.
Oh my goodness, yes. Cheryl has certainly been working. It, it's been a heavy lift for her. She's had a lot of changes and is fabulous. Thank you. I, thank you for saying that Maggie.
Thank you. I, I also just wanted to say I'm grateful to be in a community where differing views are shared respectfully. So grateful for our colleagues on the Board of Health who have given so much of their time and talents helping us navigate this pandemic, making recommendations on how to keep children and teachers safely together in school. And I'm so grateful to Superintendent Smith and all of our administrators and building leaders and staff for presenting such a robust plan to us this evening. Looking back to where we were a year ago, it's, it's really night and day in terms of the amount of information that we have at our disposal. And, you know, what we have learned and yet we find ourselves in a situation that I don't think any of us really would have predicted at the end of the school year either. And so I, in, in the best interest of children, it's my judgment that we should support the recommendations that have been made by our Board of Health, which are also the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC in terms of indoor masking at school for all those in the building. I do think that we need to, you know, keep in mind that as disheartening as that may be for a lot of us, there is progress being made. We, you know, we are not looking in the new policy to have masks outdoors in most, for most outdoor activities. You know, as Superintendent Smith explained, we are looking to return classrooms to their traditional format. And so I, while it's far from ideal and it will continue to be revisited as the data evolves, I believe this is the best that we can do for now in order to hopefully ensure that kids and teachers can be in school safely together, five days in person with minimized disruption. So I, I would support this, this policy. I do have other questions about the reopening plan, but that don't necessarily pertain to the policy vote. So I, I think perhaps we'll take those up later. Is that right Nancy?
Yes, that is right. This, this has, this has exactly to do with the vote to adopt the policy, the new policy. Liz?
Hi, thank you. I don't want to repeat everything that's already been said, but I wholeheartedly agree with what Sarah has just said and I'm thankful to everyone who's put together this clear presentation. The one addition that I have is I am fortunately working in a K through seven school that opened on August 11th. So we've had a few weeks of doing this and I just want to say that this, the major change of having normal classrooms with circle time and kids working in pods and sharing materials, that although we are all masked, it is so much more normal than it was last year. And to me, that is a major step. We haven't had to close any classrooms and we have gotten to be together with peers that we haven't seen in a year plus. There are kids who haven't been at my school who are showing up in, you know, second grade and have only been in an elementary school for six months of their life. This is a big change and while I'm hopeful that we won't be wearing masks all year, if we can stay with what we are presenting for an entire year, this is, it's a big deal. So thank you for all for making this happen.
Nancy, can I just speak real quick?
Absolutely.
I agree with everything everyone else has said here on the school committee this evening and I had the same question Mark had. But I also just really quickly want to thank the doctors on Board of Health, all the members on health and hygiene, of the effort and time they have put in and excuse my four-year-old, he's about to enter. But what really struck me was one, I really appreciate when the doctors in the community speak up, such as Michelle Witchman. I, I really appreciate hearing from them as well. And then really struck me was when Matt Vitale said that the masks are a trade-off coming out of the gate just to get our kids back in school. Because I know last year we all want our kids back in school and for me, if that's the trade-off, I'm happy to accept that. I just want my kids in school. So that's it.
Great. Thanks Leslie. Colleen?
Hi, thank you. I just want to say another vote of appreciation for our Boards of Health who guided us successfully through a school year last year like no other. And we had a relatively safe and very successful school year from my perspective. And I trust them wholeheartedly and I really appreciate all of the time that they have put in. I would also like to say that this time last year, I did not have faith in young children adhering to masks. And I am, I'm a believer now. My kids forget to take them off. When they come home, they just went through summer camp where it was hot. They made friends. They loved their counselors. Everyone was masked. The, the, the positives of being together way outweigh the cost of the mask. There may be some costs to it. I do believe that there are times that we should absolutely be unmasked, such as outside, so that they can see each other's faces. I think there are certain things like linguistics that need to be, the whole face needs to be seen. I hope that teachers will take advantage of the outdoor classrooms, especially with the youngest kids who need that when they're learning to read and to speak correctly. I think though, the, the best thing for our kids is to be back five days a week. I'm thrilled that that's what we are voting on tonight, that that's what the plan is. I am thrilled because that is what is best for their mental health. Their socio-emotional health is all about being together, especially as we've seen the backlash from when they, they were not able to be. So if, if the mask is the cost, then I, I am wholeheartedly in support. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Colleen. Dennis?
Thanks Nancy. Echo everybody's points. Articulate and, and well-conceived plan presented by all. One question that I had, just in thinking about the policy specifically. Last year we had also limited sort of trafficking to the buildings and I think there were some references to that and some of this, but it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me in the actual policy that we're voting on. Is it basically sort of similar access to the buildings as sort of pre-COVID with the expectation that there will be masking for anybody involved? Or would we be looking at either numbers of folks in the building or in specific rooms and putting limits on that? Or is that not considered necessary based on the data that we're using to make these decisions?
So Dennis, let me, let me start. You are correct in hearing that we are allowing what we said were volunteers, visitors. I even mentioned open houses, but we are keenly aware that we have to look at capacity. So, you know, previously when you made a decision about an open house and I use the example of Pine Hill because I've, I've worked just recently with that principal. And the suggestion was maybe instead of having everybody come the same night for an open house, we would do two separate nights and, you know, try to really control and provide a, a virtual option, not synchronously, but asynchronously where, you know, we have actually, you know, a, a video, a virtual opportunity for people to see something happening in, in the classroom, things that we were sharing with the parents in person. So we are going to look at all of those things, but yes, we are not going to have a, a strict no visitor into the school. Or parents, there are times, and I know a number of parents with IEP meetings asked if they could continue to do that. So it really is going to be on a case by case basis. One of the silver linings, you heard Assistant Superintendent Beth McCoy talk about, we're looking at silver linings, where even something like this Zoom meeting, I am definitely an in-person and I look forward to seeing you all in person. But this allows, if, if I look at the numbers right now, you have 117 people that are able to take part in the school committee meeting tonight. So some of those silver linings, we're going to balance with opportunities for, again, visitors, volunteers, kids to come together. I know Pine Hill, again, I'm calling that out, but I believe they have an all-school meeting on a Friday. Now, we might not be able to do that. Last year I think they did that virtually. But we might have, you know, a number of students at the meeting and again, you know, separate, just looking at capacity. So we'll continue to monitor that. I don't think it can be hard and fast in a policy, but that's my recommendation.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Dennis. Anyone else? Any more discussion on the policy revision? Maggie, can you see anyone else on the school committee?
I don't see any hands up for school members.
Okay. So I'd like to have the committees take a vote and I'll start with the region.
Sure. If my members could take themselves off mute. I need the language of the motion. Nancy, can you have it?
Sure. Um, like, let's see. To adopt the face covering policy revision for 2021, 2022.
As stated.
If I may, I think, I think there may be a preliminary vote or decision that we have to make if, if we want to actually adopt this policy tonight.
Okay.
Which I think there is good reason to do, given that we are quite close to the beginning of school, parents and administration need to know what to plan. You know, typically we have two reads of a policy.
Right.
But our, our policies do allow us to adopt without a second read, if there is unanimous approval from all members of each committee that is voting on the policy.
So how do you suggest that we go about this to do? And then if we don't, then we would schedule a second meeting for a second read?
I think that's the way to go about it. Yes.
Okay. And then for a second read, would we need a unanimous vote or no?
No, for a second read, a majority vote would pass.
Okay. So we'll start with the region. Can folks on the region take themselves off? And it has to be a roll call. So I'll call your name and then if you could just state your name and your vote. Um, so Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Tracy Mannion? Tracy Mannion, Maggie Sharon, yes. And Lynn Collins is absent.
Okay. And now for Dover.
Dover members, if you could take yourself off mute, we'll do a roll call. Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz? Liz Grossman, yes. Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Leslie?
Leslie Leon, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes.
Okay. All right, Sherburne, take yourselves off mute. David?
Yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Quandt, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
And Angie?
Angie Johnson, yes.
And Nancy Cordell, yes. So Sarah, I'm going to ask you for additional guidance. So with.
So that was the vote essentially to waive the requirement for a second reading and to take immediate action on the proposed face covering policy. So now I think that the vote before us would be to adopt the face covering policy substantially in the form presented this evening.
Okay. And I, I will hand it over to the region.
Do we have a motion at the region?
Do I have a motion to adopt the face covering policy as presented this evening and modified in your package? Judy Miller, so moved? Thank you. Judy Miller, motion made by Judy Miller. Do I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
Seconded by Kate Potter. Um, Maggie Sharon, yes. Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Tracy Mannion? Abstain, Tracy Mannion?
Yes.
Um, Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
And Lynn Collins is up.
Okay. Great. Thanks Maggie. Dover, Sarah?
So Dover, do I have a motion to adopt the face covering policy as revised in the form presented at this meeting?
Mark Healy, so moved.
Is there a second?
Liz Grossman, second.
Any discussion? All right, members, we'll do a roll call. Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Leslie?
Leslie Leon, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, Sherburne, yourselves off of mute. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the face covering policy revision as presented this evening.
Amanda Brown, second.
Thanks Amanda.
To move and then second.
Oh, I thought Nancy made the motion. No?
Yes. Amanda, second. Sorry, that's good. So Dennis? Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Angie Johnson, yes.
And Nancy Cordell, yes. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the updated interim superintendent contract.
Excuse me Nancy?
Oh yes, sorry.
Could we, could we return just to non-face covering related questions that committee members might have pertaining to the reopening plans?
Yes.
And if you want to go by committee or?
You know, we can start in Dover, Sarah.
Okay. Do any of the Dover School Committee members have other questions pertaining to the reopening plan presented this evening? If no one else does, I do have a couple. Liz?
I have all sorts of emojis. I had two questions. I was just wondering like, how will we know what students are vaccinated? To follow who is close contacts, are students at the middle and high school who currently could be vaccinated? Are they providing that to the school nurse or is it that when you are known to be a close contact, you are then asked? Or do you have to show proof? How does that work?
So I'll, I'll take that. I'll start with that. The immunization records for all students are available to the school nurses through the Massachusetts Immunization Link Registry with the state. So we will have access to all of the student immunization data as we do for measles, mumps and rubella and all of the other immunizations that are mandatory or that we track for school settings. And so we will know who has been vaccinated and who hasn't been vaccinated. As far as the close contacts, the nurses were responsible for doing the in-school contact tracing last year and that will continue this year. The definition of a close contact for the school setting, just to be clear, is that if an individual has come into contact with a COVID positive individual masked and within three feet, they would be considered a close contact. Other than that, they are not considered a close contact. So vaccinated individuals are exempt from close contact, contact tracing. And then everybody else that we're looking at is, were they within three feet of somebody indoors is?
Thank you.
Thank you. My second question was, could you share or do you know what the percentage of participation in pool testing was at Chikering and Pine Hill?
Across the district, it was pretty similar. It was about twenty-five percent participation rate at all of the buildings, so it didn't vary much within the twenty percent, twenty to twenty-five percent range.
And, and my last piece to that is, it felt like from the families that I spoke to, there wasn't like a clear understanding of what that meant for their students, that actually it's not an invasive test and that all these kids weren't going to go home because they participated. And like, ultimately, I think if people understood it better, it's what we all want, like, the sick kid goes home. We don't, I don't think anyone wants the kid with COVID staying in school. So is there going to be like a strong strategy for sharing that and getting people bought in to participate?
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. It's really helpful for us too, because we want to know where we missed the mark, so I appreciate that feedback. Definitely, there will be much more communication regarding pool testing this fall, as soon as we have it available. Like, I had mentioned earlier tonight, we're just in the process of contracting with the new vendor from the state. So as soon as we get that contract secured and we have all of the communications, we will push that out through them. So, so we will do, try to do a better job at marketing it. It is so important, and it is something that we want to see high participation rates in, so.
And I just want to add one piece to that. The state has seen this as something that's not just in Dover Sherborne, it's kind of widespread, so they've given us a lot of videos, a lot of information, kind of exactly what you were saying, Liz, of actually being so involved in it this year, like, actually watching young students do it and be independent with it. And really, how, how fortunate we were from March on, we had one day that we had positive pools, so it really was a positive experience for us, so we need to share that a bit more. So thank you for that feedback.
Any other DSC members with questions or comments regarding the reopening plan generally?
All right, thanks, Sarah. How about?
Can I? Oh, yeah, I was just trying to give other people the floor first, but, but one, one question I had. Given that we are looking now at a traditional classroom setup, meaning, you know, tables and rugs and, and we're not looking at desks spaced, you know, five plus feet apart in rows. It, one of the advantages, I suppose, of the socially-distanced classroom setup was it was very obvious who your close contacts were. It was your north, south, east, west desks. But in, in a traditional classroom setup, how will that be monitored? And I'm, you know, speaking obviously of the elementary population primarily here, because they are by definition an unvaccinated population to whom I gather the close contact protocols will apply.
Right, so I'll try to answer that question, Sarah, if I can. It is confusing, right? It's different than last year. Last year was a little bit more black and white, because we had the distancing and we had seating charts. And this year, we're going into it without those things. But the state has said that anybody who is three feet or greater apart while masked indoors in a classroom is exempt from being a close contact. So then, like you said, we worry about our kindergartners or our first graders who have a tendency to be a little bit more on top of each other. There may be a situation where we have a positive case in a classroom, such as a kindergarten classroom, where we really can't identify who was within three feet for fifteen minutes. And so then the whole classroom would participate in that test and stay program. And we would have that available for us for the seven consecutive days, and as everybody gets tested and everybody hopefully continues to be negative, they all stay in school, have access to that testing and results and, and learning all at the same time. So that's how I imagine it to be. Certainly, again, we, we have to work out the fine details, but that's kind of the broad understanding in the classrooms, the older classrooms, even I would say third, fourth, fifth grade, and definitely at the region. I think we have that spacing just, just because, so, you know, I don't want to really, I've said this a hundred times, I don't want to get into like three feet or talking about spacing in a very specific, because we don't have to have that. It's just how we look at the, the classroom globally. And if, if I walked into a 10th grade biology class or, or another class at the region, and you can see that they're three feet apart just by the way they're sitting in their seats. So that's how we're looking at it.
Yeah, it does, it does. And I think the test and stay program will hopefully go a long way at mitigating risk while minimizing disruption. The, the second and last question I had regarding reopening generally, I know that our Boards of Health recently took up the topic of vaccine mandates, and we're seeing news constantly now about employers, you know, either mandating vaccines or, or putting in place testing requirements for those who are unvaccinated. I wondered whether someone might be able to speak to, you know, the percentage of unvaccinated teachers and staff, and whether there are additional safety measures, perhaps short of a vaccine mandate that we can be taking, for example, including those individuals, or requiring those individuals to submit to weekly testing or high-performance masks. Just especially again, as we are considering, my, my concern is, you know, the elementary kids who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated. I'd love to hear more about that.
So Sarah, let me, let me say that we have open discussions with our Dover Sherborne Educators Association. You know, very cooperative conversations, so we will start to have some of those conversations as as we start to look at, as you said, this is happening very quickly with, with businesses. You know, I, I'm not sure if there will be mandates. We have a very good handle on who is vaccinated and who is not. So we will look at those, as I said, we will look at those percentages as part of our metrics, but as far as putting in other mitigating opportunities to make sure that we're protecting our vaccinated staff and students or, as you said, our unvaccinated students, especially at the elementary school, I will keep you updated, but we are going to be having conversations. And I'm not going to say that that's going to happen right away, but we will continue to look at those, those opportunities.
Thank you. The region, do you have any additional questions, Maggie?
Do any of the members of the region have questions regarding the reopening plan? Comments? Okay. I feel like we're good. I did have a question. I know Lynn can't be with us tonight. She, she's sorry, she's, this is her moment to drop off her daughter at college for the first time, so we wish her good luck in, in DC. She did have, have a question that she asked me to ask on her behalf. She's not understanding about the bus, and I do recognize that the guidance from the, about the bus came down from Desi. So I don't know whether or not anyone is able to share, but we know that some of those kids are on the bus for longer than, you know, fifteen minutes, or, you know, long period of time. The bus is technically indoors. She's curious as to if we have any concerns about not contact tracing bus people.
Don, I'm going to hand it over to you, but I want to stop by saying it wasn't a mandate from Desi, it is a federal mandate. Desi is just, you know, reminding schools that we need to follow this mandate.
No, the masking on the bus is the federal mandate, but the not contact tracing.
Right, and I will say, Maggie and Jill, we've talked about this in our group meetings, we did not have any we had very little contact tracing that happened on the buses. I think they, I think with the windows open and the air circulation that they are trying to guarantee on the buses is why they think that, my guess is, I mean, they didn't give us full disclosure on their decision-making. But with that, coupled with the, wearing the mask and having the air circulation, they probably felt like it's probably not worthwhile to try to contact trace a bus.
Thank you. And that's all for me, unless Kate or Judy or Tracy have another question or comment. All right.
I'm also.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. How about Sherborne, any comments or questions?
Does reopening plan have, are you guys planning to do this in our communications if there are cases that do pop in any of the schools similar to what? I think it was Cheryl or Andrew or some combination sent out last year.
We ha, we haven't talked about it specifically, I don't think, but I can't imagine why we wouldn't offer that information. I, I think we were very transparent last year, and we'll continue to do that unless anybody has a, a different opinion, but.
I, I agree with you, Jill. I, I talked about a, a data dashboard. We're going to talk about, again, you'll have to educate me a little bit on what you did share with the community, but I agree, fully transparent, making sure our stakeholders are our partners and know exactly what's happening in our schools. You know, if we have to change mitigation strategies or become more strict, restrictive, which is not the direction we want to go in, we will continue to share the reasons why we're making these decisions and have it up, hopefully, and, and I know Assistant Superintendent McCoy, I know put together your website last year with lots of information, and I believe if you want to jump in, Beth, if you're still here, but I know you shared that information widely in the, in the communities.
Yeah, so we'll have the, you know, the information that comes out via email or via phone, you know, within the moment that it's necessary. And then we, we will continue to house it on that, we are DS website, as well as the weekly data dashboard.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, David, Amanda, or Angie, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Nancy, I had a quick question, and Jill, this is probably for you. I have a question about the consent process. So I'm, is it one consent you fill out at the beginning of the year, and that's good for the whole year for testing? I'm thinking of the kindergarten classroom, where everyone needs the rapid test, and you trying to communicate with every parent to get that consent at that moment. I know that I'm very confident in your excellent communication about what's happening, but once the consent's signed, are, are parents good for the year?
Yes, I would imagine that that's the case. I haven't actually seen the consent yet, Amanda, because it's not out yet. But that's how the pool testing was last year, so once you consented to pool testing, you, your student was in pool testing until you revoked it. So I would imagine it would be the same thing, because unless they want to really drive me batty and, and make me get consent every time, I think it's going to be a one-time shot deal for it.
The only thing I would add to that, Amanda, is that because there are three forms of testing, we probably will need multiple consents to be consented for all types. So there will be the one time, but more, especially at elementary level too, and.
Okay, that makes sense. Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Amanda. Anyone else from Sherborne? No, all right, great, great, great discussion. Next on the agenda is, Kate is going to touch upon briefly the update that was made to the interim superintendent contract.
Thanks, Nancy. Hopefully, this will be fairly straightforward. Later today, at some point, we all got an update in the language to the superintendent contract. A little background on that is that after a couple of weeks on the job, Superintendent Smith reached out to the contract subcommittee and asked us to take another look at the cell phone policy. And we did that and realized that we had not, in the past, we have not provided a work cellphone for our superintendents, but that really has become common practice. The subcommittee felt that it made a lot of sense in terms of separating work life and personal life in terms of quick communication among building leaders, community members, school committee members. And then we investigated it with the help of, of Don Fattori and found out that it was really a very minimal cost to the district. So the, the new paragraph five, which is part of the contract that we do need to vote on because it's part of Superintendent Smith's contract, just allows for a work cellphone that she will be able to use this year. And at the end of the year, it, it stays with the district. It's really a very simple and straightforward plan, and I'm happy to take questions, and Don, not to put you on the spot, but if anybody has questions about the cost to the districts, if you might be willing to step in, that would be great.
I can, I quickly just summarize so people know. We actually have two staff who have cell phones. So we already have a corporate account to add a third line. As you all know, when you add a third line to your home account, it's minimal. We are also able, because we are adding a new line, as you, if you go to the store, you realize when you add a new line, they basically give you a free phone. And so we got a promotion on a phone that's basically five dollars a month for eighteen months. So it was very minimal to add a third line on to our existing AT&amp;T account.
Thanks, Don.
Okay, great. So I think by by committee, we will vote, we take a, a motion is to adopt the updated interim superintendent's contract specifically in paragraph five.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. And I'll start with the region.
Thanks, Nancy. If my members could please take themselves off mute. Do I have a motion to adopt the superintendent's contract amended as was just explained to you, to include paragraph five with cellphone provided?
Kate Potter, so moved.
Motion by Kate Potter, do I have a second?
Judy Miller, second.
Second by Judy Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take all vote. Tracy, did you have a discussion?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay, sorry. Tracy Mannion?
Yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes.
Okay, great. Dover?
Question, do we have to do this actually by Union Fifty with, you know, additional votes by non-Union Fifty members sort of as a, you know, show of their support or not?
You said because of the contract.
Yeah, yeah, so so in that case, do I have a motion from Union, a Union Fifty member on behalf of Union Fifty to adopt this new provision of the interim superintendent contract?
Leslie Leon, so moved.
Second?
Sorry, Mark Healy, second.
Any discussion? All right, I'll, I'll call out the Dover School Committee members on Union Fifty for a roll call vote. Mark Healy?
Mark Healy, yes.
Leslie Leon?
Leslie Leon, yes.
Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes. And then Nancy, can I turn it to you for the Sherborne members, and then we can go back and take votes from our remaining school committee members?
Sure.
That makes sense?
Yep, so Nancy Cordell, yes?
And a Brown, yes.
Angie Johnson, yes.
It becomes this, yes.
And then I'll ask for a roll call vote by the non-Union Fifty members on Dover School Committee. Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
And Liz Grossman.
Liz Grossman, yes. I'll ask for the non Union Fifty members on Sherman School Committee, Dennis?
Dennis Quon, yes.
And David?
Oh, sorry. First time.
And are we done with this? Or Maggie, do you have to?
Nope, we're done.
Okay, okay, great.
And turn on the cell phone, Superintendent Smith.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent search update, which Sarah is going to briefly talk to.
Sure, so we are all most grateful to have Kathy Smith at the helm as our interim superintendent this year. But as we all know, that still leaves our school committees needing to make plans for the superintendency going forward. So earlier this week, I reached out to Art Bettenkort at NSDEC. This is our search firm to search firm to ask for guidance on next steps and a suggested timeline if we are to conduct another superintendent search this year. And so you you will have seen in your packet that NSDEC prepared a working draft timeline for us. And I wanted to just call out a few highlights for everyone's information. NSDEC has offered to hold a workshop with school committee members in September, which might be helpful to do, given that the composition of our committees has changed, at least in part since the search done last year. And NSDEC's guidance, recognizing that no one has a crystal ball and we remain in a state of uncertainty with pandemic, is that the superintendent applicant pool will begin to form in the fall. And so we would be well served to post the position in September, form a screening committee that would work in October and November to review applications in executive session and recommend candidates to the school committees, and then have the school committees conduct public interviews of finalists and make a selection in the December, January timeframe. I did ask Art, you know, given the uncertain state of things at present, whether there is leeway on timing, you know? In other words, what if we were to decide, you know what? We want to let things sort of settle and begin a search in January that would come to a conclusion in the spring? His advice was that, you know, if you develop the applicant pool in the fall and have a candidate named in that January timeframe, it allows for more time for a successful transition. But ultimately, the best advice is to give ample time to do the process well whenever we begin. And Art did share that if our, if we were to proceed this fall and the screening committee were to determine that, for whatever reason, the applicant pool didn't meet expectations, that they could decide to defer and NSDEC would renew its obligation to do the search for us at a future date. So as I see it, the tasks sort of before us in the short term are to consider whether to take NSDEC up on their offer to hold a workshop with us on next steps. And also, if if we are to move forward with a search this fall, to have school committee members who would be interested in serving on a screening committee reach out to their chairs to signal that interest so that that group can be formed. Great, thanks, Sarah. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay, great. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, there are two items. One is the the minutes from our June 16 meeting. Does anyone for the minutes have any changes or they found any errors in the minutes? Okay. And the second item in the consent agenda was the change to the academic calendar for next year, which recognizes the federal holiday, June 19. So that is now put on the calendar and it affects us if we do have snow days and we have to go into that next week. And that Monday would be a holiday, the the 20th, which is a Monday. Any discussion on the the academic calendar? Okay. All right, so by committee, do you want to make a motion to accept the consent agenda? And I'll start with the region.
Sure, if you guys could take yourselves off mute at the region, please. Hi, Judy, um, do I have a motion? As shared by Nancy and in your packet.
Judy Miller, so moved.
Um, do I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
Second by Kate Potter, any discussion with consent agenda? Okay, um, then I'll take a vote. Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. Thank you, and look forward to celebrating June 2.
Okay, could I have Dover, please? All right, Dover School Committee members, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Colleen Burt, second.
Any discussion?
I have one question. In terms of the remote days that we did last year and and the the snow days, is there any chance that we would do a remote day instead of a snow day? In on a snow day, in an effort not to eat into our summer vacation? If that's a possibility, I know that we did one, one half day, I believe, last year, remote, which saved us, saved us one summer day.
So I believe at this point, with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, our students have to go to school for 180 days. We, they had talked at one point about piloting what they call Blizzard bags, Blizzard days. I'm not sure if Dover Sherborne did take part in that pilot program. But as far as I know at this point, they're not allowing the remote days. Now, I'll ask my other leadership team members if they, we haven't discussed this, if they know otherwise. But at this point, I do not think they're allowing the remote days.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. And it's so I assume that we go back to past practice, which is if you are a district that wants to pilot it, you would have to go through an application process and approval by the commissioner.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All right, let's take our vote. Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Leslie?
Leslie Leon, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez done, yes. Great, so make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Sorry, Dennis, go for it.
Dennis Quan, so we.
Amanda Brown, second.
Okay, great. Any discussion? No, okay, ready for a vote? David?
David Kaisas, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Quan, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Angie?
Angie Johnson, yes.
And Nancy Cordell, yes. Okay, by unanimous consent, can we vote to adjourn?
I think so.
Yeah. Thanks, everyone. Enjoy the rest, the last days, the last 11 days of summer.